Monday, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five Board Meeting for Westlake City Schools. Roll call.
Here now. Vanuken?
Here.
Lamb?
Present.
Lozenki?
Here.
President Kraft is not able to attend tonight.
You'll all rise. As always, we'd like to start our meetings with our mission and vision statement. For Westlake City Schools, our mission statement is, we educate for excellence, empowering all students to achieve their educational goals, to direct their lives, and to contribute to society. In our vision statement is, Westlake City Schools will provide a dynamic, student-centered learning environment. Our district will be characterized by high achievement, actively engaged learning, learners, mutual respect, shared knowledge, pursuit of new skills and capabilities, collaborative learning, willingness to take action, team commitment, data-driven, continuous improvement through our strategic planning process, and tangible result. We have a wonderful group of visitors here today, and I'm thrilled. One more off here, and so we're, thank you for being here this evening. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Roll call.
Lozenki?
Yes.
Vanuken?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Here now. Motion carries.
And at this time, I am going to invite Dr. David Axner, who is the Executive Director of FATA, which is the Buckeye Superintendent Association. Please come on up.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Get up here. Here too. Okay, well, um. Good evening, and I want to start by saying, as I always do. Thank you, School Board. I, uh, you know, we don't do that enough, and, um, the jobs you have, I can see here that, that there's a lot of positive energy, uh, but so many school board meetings that I go into, and there's many people, and it's not salute an award or recognition that somebody's getting. Uh, so I give you a lot of credit for what you do. I, I, I'm not sure I could do it and, um, take what you do sometime from the commu- uh, community and everything else. Uh, but thanks for your work. Thanks for your hours, your time away from, from your own family and so forth, uh, on what you do. So, um, just want to start with that. My name is Dave Axner and, and Executive Director at the Buckeye Association of School Administrators. Uh, so I wanted to talk a little bit about best if we understand that, that end of the award and, and we'll, we'll keep this role and, uh, to really talk about Scott, uh, because that's, that's why I'm here. So we're the professional organization for the superintendent, then, uh, if you think of it the way we have thousand members, but only six hundred fifteen public schools, uh, and the reason is we have, we have a career tech, uh, and, uh, we have a whole lot of directors, assistants, soup, and so forth, that also, uh, have joined for the reasons that I'll talk about now. Um, we give our superintendent's representation, uh, in a number of ways with the department. We, the Education Workforce, General Assembly, uh, we have, uh, every, every day of the week, we have one or two people down at the State House, which again isn't always a fun thing, uh, but we got some incredible people that, uh, protect our schools and, and get to make those contacts and so forth, uh, because our superintendents, although they still get down to the State House, uh, can't do it on the, the range or the, the amount of time that, that we're down there. Also, the Governor's Office and, uh, in the Lieutenant Governor, we've had a, a great, uh, relationship with them for years. It's really nice when we have to make a call, and there is a big deal, and we need to move something. Uh, we don't always get our way, but, but we do get our call answered, our email answered, and, and whatever we need. Um, we have sixteen standing committees. So it's that. Committees, I think you're on that committee now, um. We have a Department for the Educational Workforce, we have the Ohio High School Athletic Association, which, um, you were going out on regional starting tomorrow, and, and NIL is going to be, uh, a, a big piece and, and conversation of what we'll be talking about. Uh, let's leave a committee. We had seventy-five superintendents in our conference room just, uh, a few days ago to talk about all that, the, uh, taxing and property tax and income tax and so forth, uh, to get everybody the best we can on, on the same page. Uh, finance, higher ed, and, and I could go on and on. So in those, um, for every committee, if you think about like the Ohio High School Athletic Association, Doug Youth, the Commissioner, is, is the one there, uh, for the Educational Workforce, and when we have that committee, uh, you back and there. This is an opportunity for our superintendents to, to understand that, and to have conversation with those who are leading those, uh, departments. So this year, we recognize one member in each region. We have ten regions, you're Region Three, uh, for leadership and service. Uh, our goal is to, uh, provide some external validation for what you already know. Uh, I can feel it when I walked in here that, that you know you have a very good talent superintendent, uh, and he's known that way in the area, but he's also known that way in, in Columbus. So when you, you make it like that, uh, you're kind of a big deal, and that's about time you, you get this, this award. Uh, the criteria for the award, uh, you must, must be selected by your peers, have community involvement, have professionally, a leader of character, an innovator, and you set an example, um, for your peers. Uh, and tonight, again, the reason I'm here is your superintendent, Scott Goggins, uh, is exactly our leadership award winner, who I'll bring him up in just a minute. But his colleagues had something to say, right there? Uh, so I'll be, I'll be nice and, uh, I won't even mention who did that, but I would tell you, if I'm sitting where you are, and, and you were reading this about me, uh, it put a nice smile on my face, and you should be very proud, as, uh, I'm sure your wife already knows what a great guy he is, right? Uh, so if I can just read a couple. But here's again what his colleague superintendent said about him and his leadership. Ben, my thought partner, while we both served in similar capacities in different districts, I've always enjoyed him as a person and found his counsel to be very worthwhile. Very well-deserved, major award. Scott is only an accept, is not only an exceptional leader, but also one of the genuine, most genuine people that I know. He's a privilege to know. His deep love for Westlake City Schools is evident in everything he does. Scott leads with purpose, compassion, and a steady which keeps him more specific for his students in the center of his decisions. His unwavering, this is another superintendent, his unwavering commitment to Westlake students, staff, and community, as well as in Northeast Ohio, is evident in everything he does. Scott, not only is a colleague, but a visionary leader. A steadily trusted colleague, always willing to share his expertise, offer perspective, to talk through the challenge, through a challenge. Scott brings, uh, logical, organized approach and professional, uh, professionalism to them, uh, to his leadership. Um, and then finally, uh, his commitment to supporting others, uh, his passion at Westlake City Schools are evident in every interaction, inspiration, trust, collaboration, and excellence across our region. On a personal note, I would not be here today if it weren't, and, and I've been a superintendent now for, for eight years, without Scott's mentorship and example. So those of your colleagues, that's what they think about you, and at this time, Scott, if I could have you come up, Congratulations, uh, Scott Goggins for receiving the two thousand twenty-five BESA Leadership Exemplary Leadership Award.
Scott Perkins is deputy, and we had an opportunity to take a picture with Scott, get your autographs and everything. Um, and, uh, this is for you too, with, uh, actually, he was able to receive the, the award in Columbus in front of, uh, about seven hundred fifty people. So we always try to get out, I was glad, uh, I had the invite to come and actually give it to him here in, in front of his board and many. Congratulations.
That's it to Katie. Do you want your photo, though?
Definitely have.
What?
Okay. And I have you hit it double. Yeah, you want to have the boards come up?
Okay.
Scott, you guys had a little bit to do with it. We doing, W? He makes our drive.
You're not.
I'll let you enjoy it. Appreciate the call. Thanks. So I do want to. We're excited for the performance, uh, and, and gave you things since people took the time to show up. Um, I'd like to thank Dr. Axner for being here tonight, and, uh, FATA for honoring me with this award. Uh, for those who may not be familiar with FATA, this organization plays an essential role as a steadfast advocate for public education and a strong supporter of school administrators across Ohio. Doc, Dr. Axner, you've been such an important figure in that mission, and I'm truly grateful for your presence and for this recognition. And one thing I will admit, um, being at the center of attention isn't something I'm naturally comfortable with. Um, our Board of Education President, who can't be here tonight, uh, Joe Kraft and I have actually discussed this before. Um, he once, in, in response, when I told him that, he shared with me that he has a large family. And in his family, there are siblings who don't like celebrating birthdays. But he reminds them that the celebration isn't only about one person. It's a moment for everyone to come together and appreciate something bigger. That really resonated with me. Makes me think about earlier this year, when we celebrated our painting director, Hillary Patriot, for receiving the Barry Manilow Award. We all recognized that her achievement reflected not only her, but also the excellence of our entire music program. In that same spirit, I see tonight's honor not as a personal achievement, but as a recognition of the collective leadership and dedication that defines the Westlake City School District. Now, I appreciate you giving me the award, but our painting director got Barry Manilow.
I mean, that, that's pretty awesome. Um, this requires under strong and steady board leadership, and Wesley can't be fortunate. For has guided this district through challenges, ranging from a global pandemic, to financial stewardship, to bold facility planning. You have always led with integrity, placing the students' needs and staff in our community above all else. Not every superintendent or community has that benefit. I've also been blessed with an exceptional leadership team. Uh, Dan White is here tonight. Dan is now an accomplished superintendent of the revered schools, where my wife happens to be an alum. Dan was my writing man during my time in Midview, and I was surrounded there, as I am now in Westlake, by outstanding leaders. From our Central Office Team, to our treasurer, Todd Hopkins, the building, the graders, the teachers, and support staff. Each one contributes to making my job easier and our district stronger. I'm reminded how fortunate I've been to work alongside such talented and dedicated people, that dedicated people, from Dan, uh, as my Director of Academics in Midview, to now Amanda Mutzelman, my associate superintendent here in Westlake. Been blessed with incredible educators and leaders. I also want to acknowledge my superintendent colleagues. There's only one superintendent in each district, so the role can be isolating at times. That's why a trusted network of peers is invaluable. Dan, as well as Mick Schof and Mike Barnes, have been that support for me. I'll never forget me, Mick, and Mike, say that three times fast. Sitting socially distanced, of course, in Mick's backyard during the height of the COVID pandemic, trying to make sense of the constantly changing guidance of state and schools running. Those conversations built more than just solutions, they built lifelong friendships. Mick Schof is also here this evening, and I can say is one of my closest friends. And of course, none of this would be possible without my family. Uh, my wife, Michelle, has always been my anchor, listening, advising, and offering perspective when I needed it most. Our children, Emma and Scott Junior, deserve a special thank you as well. Having your dad as a superintendent isn't always easy. Your accomplishments are sometimes questioned, your mistakes magnified, and yes, you catch some grief from classmates on snow days that I don't follow. To all of you, my family, colleagues, staff, and friends, thank you. On behalf of the Westlake City School District, I'm pleased to accept this educational leadership award. This recog- recognition reflects, reflects not only one individual, but a community committed to excellence in education and to do what's best for kids every single day. Thank you.
Superintendent Dr. Axner and others who came for this in particular, please feel free to be dismissed at this point, unless you want to stay for a riveting Board of Education meeting, which I know you do. Please, thank you for coming, and, uh, we would not be offended if you, you chose to leave at this point.
Before people head out, you want to do a photo with the other superintendents that are here?
Do you want, can we pause?
Can we pause for a moment?
Yep, we don't even have to do, go through this, it'll be fine.
Okay. Okay. All right, I'll do that.
To Dr. Goggins, and I'm sure I've done, myself and Russell the Board, we are thrilled and honored that you received the award. Um, shall we move on to the different?
Yes, please. Now we get back to work. All right. So. So we're at?
Yeah.
We are, I'm fine. Yeah, it's okay. All right. That's all right. Hey, uh, so to go through my report, oh, we are wrapping up the first quarter of school. There will not, there will not be school for students on Friday due to a teacher work, and to wrap up the first quarter. Things that are on the agenda that I would like to highlight, and then, um, we can, you can ask questions as we go through the agenda items. Um, one, and, and I mentioned, you know, as I was just speaking a moment ago, our Central Office Team, so I just want to highlight a couple of things. Uh, one on the agenda is in the gifts and donations in regard to accepting, um, some donation from the whole Home Builders Institute. Um, this is an area where I'll, I'll, I'll shout out Paul Wilson, who's really been, um, we set a goal to get our kids more engaged in the community and businesses, and he really has taken this on. Um, he met with the Home Builders Institute and, uh, really worked with Adam Purdy in creating, uh, kind of like a mentorship program. It's, it's like an expansion of our Know Your Home, and we're trying to gradually build it more and more. They've been donating items, Home Depot gift cards, and, and also, um, kids will be able to go out and shadow, um, out on, uh, construction sites and, and different types of things. And addition to that, uh, he's been working with Bob Patton to create that mentorship program. If you recall, um, the kids were coming in and presenting about the wonderful experiences they've had. Um, they're getting a lot of placements going right now. Just got a great lead. I don't think I can announce the name of the company, but it's, it's another one that has come in and said they would take our kids. So we're seeing our students getting more and more out in the community, and Paul has taken that one on. Um, another agenda item, uh, was Bob Mavor working on our calendar. Um, again, we heard the feedback from people. There was the desire to shift the calendar from being a start late in the summer and a little bit later into June, to going to that, starting a little bit earlier in the, the summer and ending earlier at the end of the year. That does align with our neighbors across the board. Um, and we had no problem doing it, and the board had discussed it and instructed me to come back with one, not for twenty-six, twenty-seven, but a revision of, no, I'm sorry, not one for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, but a revision of twenty-six, twenty-seven, which is on the agenda today, and non-agenda item, but something that really, uh, seemed to take a long time, that Adam House and Peter Gray led, and that getting our Syntetic Liquors, uh, into place. Um, this isn't as simple as a plug and play type of thing, where you just show up and hit the button and it starts working. There's the, the flashers, um, what are those called again? Beacons that are all across the district, the out, outdoor, um, uh, transmission type of things that are called what? Stairways that are, that are outside, um, and then it became training staff, it became the software integration, and, and just this past week, they ran a, uh, full test of the system, because it's one thing for this device to be working inside the schools, but it also needs to transmit to the dispatcher and to the police department to make sure that when we say something's wrong, they know, they know that something is wrong. So that was completed this week. Everything worked according to plan, um, and it was, uh, a, a really big project that is now finally, uh, completely completed. So with those items, uh, what I wanted, I wanted to mention prior to my, uh, agenda items, but as we get into those, if there are any questions, you'll be able to ask me for that, but that would conclude my report.
Mr. Lozenki and I have met on Friday.
Oh, yeah.
You, uh, we're talking about policy stuff, and we, he showed us how the interface works and what lights up and whatnot. It might be worth adding that to an executive session at a future date when, um, Mr. Kraft is back, just so people can see. And because of the security issue, that would be under the executive.
True. Yep.
So we can just kind of go through a little bit more of them. Anything else?
Thank you. Um, I apologize, I, I had a listing of, of some information in front of me, and, uh, it dropped off my computer, so I apologize. But I, I'm going to give a little bit of a, uh, a talk here tonight. Um, and really, I, I know the board knows a lot of this information, so it's fair to talk to the community and those who are watching, uh, or will eventually watch on YouTube. Um, there's been a lot going on in school finance, uh, over the past, really now, we're somewhere in the six-month range. Uh, probably more changes or proposed changes, uh, than, uh, all the other twenty-three and a half years of my career. Um, yeah, it's just really kind of crazy what's going on. Um, there's really two pieces that I, I want to give some information that I haven't asked for our community. Uh, so on the information side of this is, so far, the bills that have been passed and the vetoes that have been, uh, overridden ha- uh, will have limited impact on Westlake City Schools. So what appears to be happening right now in, uh, Columbus is as they're looking to make some changes to, uh, property taxes, uh, they're targeting what's called the twenty mil floor, and specifically, uh, types of levies that are outside of the twenty mil floor. So, uh, what the twenty mil floor is, is back, I believe in the seventies, uh, the state passed, uh, some changes to property tax, and they created a floor to receive state funding. And they said, in order to receive state funding, you have to start at least twenty mils of property tax. Um, that twenty mils is exempt from House Bill nine twenty, which was also passed, I believe in nineteen thirty-three. That, that, that as your, uh, property values go up, your mileage goes down. So if your property values go up and you're at the twenty mil floor, your mileage would drop down. But because you were below that twenty mils, it would go back to twenty mils. They made some adjustments to that rule, okay, um, of the, of House Bill nine twenty. And so emergency levies, um, uh, substitute levies, uh, there's some, uh, fix some levies that, that are outside of that, uh, House Bill nine twenty. So as, um, uh, your property values go up, they might be adjusted, but it's not counted into your twenty mil floor. So right now, there's about four hundred plus school districts in the state of Ohio who operate at the twenty mil floor. And some of them are artificially at the twenty mil floor, because they are at the twenty mil floor for their operating levies, but they charge additional emergency levies, so they're collecting higher than the twenty mil floor. So during these, the past few years, when we've had some significant increases on home values, there are some districts that are getting large inflationary increases because of those levies, um, because they have levies outside of the twenty mil floor, and they're operating twenty mil floors, so if your property tax, or if your property value for the community went up by, say, thirty percent, okay, that would equate to dropping down about six mils. So those communities would get six mils more without a vote of the public. Okay, by moving back to that twenty mil floor. It's a complicated piece, it's challenging, but it's been a move that districts have made over the past, really, we've seen it explode in the past twenty years. Um, Westlake is not one of those districts. Okay, Westlake has operated, um, on a very clean, straightforward approach. Uh, we have a handful of continuous levies that have been passed, uh, throughout the seventies, eighties, nineties, and early two thousand. The district has not successfully passed a new operating levy since two thousand and six. And we are not at the twenty mil floor. So none of these changes right now are having any substantial impact on Westlake, um, uh, as we are moving forward. Now, there are some proposed bills that will have, or could have significant impact, uh, including, I believe, House Bill ninety-three, which would be essentially making all packets collected, uh, into Columbus. They would cut the rate, it would be collected in Columbus, and Columbus would distribute it equally to every school. Um, that would have a devastating effect on Westlake. Um, we operate, uh, the community here chooses to fund the school district for a number of our, uh, uh, programming, including, you know, you can see things like the P H D that the community chose to build back in, uh, two thousand. Um, you would have those local decisions removed from the board and communities, and you would operate only on, uh, money that's, uh, delivered to you or given to you by Columbus. Um, we are in the best position possible to weather this storm. Okay? Um, the board made some moves, including moved over the summer, that we've been very upfront and transparent about, moving to a capital improvement fund. Um, that did change our five-year forecast. We were notified this week, uh, that we are required to put together a plan, or I'm sorry, last week. Uh, we were notified last week that we are required to put a get, put together a plan, because we're showing a deficit in, uh, year three of our now four-year forecast. Um, and that plan will have to be presented to the board and board approved, uh, at the December board meeting, and then certified to the state, uh, by, I want to say it's the number twentieth. I'll forward the email to you that I read. Um, we knew some of that was coming. When we moved, uh, ten million dollars over to the, uh, a continuous, uh, I'm sorry, construction, the capital improvement fund, we knew that would have a dramatic impact on our, uh, our great funds. The board can rescind that move. Okay, I'm not advising the board to do that right now, but. Okay, I'm not advising the board to do that right now, but as we said, the big uh, put together a plan, one of the plan. Moves may be asking the board to rescind that move, uh, to put the money back into town. So we are in a very, very good position. We've got hurdles that we need to jump through. But uh, my act for the community, my act for the board is. Uh, as we're going through and talking about property tax, uh, I'll be the first one to put up my hand and say, I don't like paying tax. Okay, and it's not the property tax. Uh, I think I don't like taxes in general. But um, it's one of those uh, necessary needles. And if we're going to change the way we fund schools, if we're going to change the way that we uh. Do property taxes in the state of Ohio, uh, I ask that the decision is made. Um, in a way that we have a solution in place before we remove property tax collect. Um, I think that's a logical thing to do. If we're going to remove it, that's fine, but we need to have a solution before. And a solution that doesn't just make public education and local control of education. So I would ask that our community would advocate for that, would contact our legislators, uh, would push for that. And as people are approached uh, about signing petitions or supporting the idea of a uh. Property tax amendment that would uh, remove the options for property taxes, I would ask that you would consider that. And a question that I would ask whoever is asked to mute a sign is what is the solution? Okay, that if we remove all these property taxes, how do we move forward? Because uh, schools, cities, counties, township, uh, metro park, port authorities, there's all kinds of taxing authorities to collect property tax. And we need to be able to uh, replace that fund. So that's my ask, that's my report for tonight. I'm happy to answer questions about it, but uh. You know, the the thought of it is we're in a good place, we just need to be uh, uh, thoughtful about how we move forward. Thanks.
I'm gonna ask everybody real quick, is your internet working?
Yeah, that's. You know, I picked up where.
Yeah, I just texted him.
Yeah.
I'm on my hotspot.
Okay, yeah, just destroying my phone, let's say like, hang on a second.
Broadcasting?
We're wired.
Okay, good.
We're broadcasting, but um.
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry, the uh, the wireless, that's why my computer.
Connecting to my hot spot right now. Uh, thank you for confirming what I've been telling community members who've expressed concerns to me. Um, over the past few weeks about what's happening in Columbus and how it would uh, impact our school district. Um, I told them that uh, we've uh, we've got a great treasurer and and his team is uh, been working on this and making sure that we're in a comfortable place where. We aren't as concerned as, you know, some of our neighbors are and that our taxes are one of the lowest, uh, you know, obviously we know that on the west side of. Um, county will pretty much in the what, right county area, so thank you very much for confirming that.
Certainly, and and we've been very, very blessed here. Uh, when we look back historically, uh. Between the leadership of Board of Education, the superintendent, the administrative team. Uh, but also the the work with the city, city has been fantastic and the city has uh, worked in a long-term uh. Vision of uh, expanding the community and and the businesses in the community. A lot of uh, cities will do kind of the one-hit wonders where they'll bring in some big project and that's great, it gives a funding force. Uh, but then, you know, five, ten, fifteen years down the road, you're like, hey, where do we get more money from? Um, I've not seen another uh, community like this where we've seen long-term sustained growth over. You know, now I I think Crocker Park is coming up on thirty years. I think it was the mid into late nineties, is that about right?
That was more the promenade made, crock crock extension was after two thousand.
Okay, so it started it in the mid nineties and then continued to grow and we're still seeing growth at Crocker Park right now. Uh, we see uh, new homes coming into the community still, when I thought that all the property is filled out. Uh, you know, we've got benefits here in the communities, like we've had that long-term growth and it is, it has benefited the school district immensely. So it's been a great partnership between the two.
Is there any uh, any other discussion that relates to changing the VAS continuous? Let me see.
You know, as far as I'm aware right now, um, and I wanna, I can't stress uh. How much I appreciate the work and the information uh, from the Alliance for High Quality Education. Uh, this Board of Education choose to participate uh, in a consortium of school districts called the Alliance of uh, for High Quality Education. Uh, and they have been invaluable in the information that they can disseminate to us and the advocacy that they have been for Wet Lake and schools like. Um, and uh, and and as well as Bat, who was here tonight. Uh, and then uh, OASO, uh, who is the uh, full business, uh, uh, business manager and treasurer, uh, a group as well. So uh, from what we're hearing right now, uh, no, it it seems like. Right now, the uh, let's say body is is working on several of these bills that will not have a direct impact on us. It appears that they may take a break as we get into the holidays and kind of just take a deep breath on everything. And then see how things go in the spring. They may come back for round two of the spring. And then that's when we'll look at it and see. Uh, I think the legislative body is very much concerned about the possibility of a citizen initiative to uh, repeal property tax. Uh, to ban the use of property tax, and so I think they're trying to be proactive. But uh, we're uh, trying to add, they, for that, that proactivity would, uh, we could minimize the impact on us.
Just for clarification, this isn't the, the ban on property taxes, it's a wholesale ban on property tax discussion, it is not just school.
No.
It would be impact city.
Cities as well.
Well, my understanding of it, all of them is, oh, you, my understanding, and it's limited, I've only looked into a little bit. But the citizen initiative, my understanding is it would ban the collection of all property tax.
Regardless.
Regardless of school, city, well, businesses uh, pay property tax, they don't collect it. Uh, but your ones who collect property taxes will be your port authority, your library, your uh, metro parks. Uh, county city, uh, schools, uh, J D S, I mean, there's about a handful of taxing authorities and we would all lose out on that.
But but the average citizen would not pay.
They get the homeowners and property owners, whether business or homeowner, property owners wouldn't have property tax.
So business, business, people that have business.
Yeah, any real estate, yeah, your real estate taxes would not exist, is my understanding.
So that, and that's one of the things that came up when we were at uh, a BATS function. Uh, a couple months ago or last month, was one of the presenters and and I don't know where the information came from, was that. Of the twenty-four billion dollars that are collected um, for property taxes, eight billion are business. And so the big question is, is that ratio gonna be the same? If they do something like income tax or, you know, or is more of the bourbon gonna go on? Um, the individual as opposed to the business, and that's the point I think Todd's making. Is there really doesn't seem to be a a fluid plan. And and more of like, we don't want it, we'll get rid of it, and it's like, well, then how do we? How do we do all of this? And um, and I, and I would, the only thing I would add to what Todd said. Is I do want to see a thoughtful plan if something like that was gonna happen, but I also want it to be a thoughtful plan. That will allow local control. And uh, I'm a, I'm a huge believer in community. And and I I love the Westlake community and I think every community, whether you're in Westlake, you're in Bay, you're in Rocky River, you have an identity. You have who you are as a community. And then when you have the state then, making those decisions for your community, the reason you chose to live where you live. I just think that takes away from a lot of what we just value every day. And and so it's not just about, right, you know, I get the math with it, right? You know, make sure we can balance the ledgers, but also don't take that away. Um, and so that's the other part for me that uh, I want to protect.
Well, that's going into the Senator Brenner's bill that you put forward, which is what, a thousand pages long and kind of goes from. Taxing and basically taking all of the uh, property taxes in the state or school districts and lumping it as a one sum and then doling it out from there. And then also consolidation of school districts to countywide buffering to, and there's a lot involved with it. So I think this is more, you know, there's gonna be a lot of these discussions we're gonna be having over probably the next couple of years.
And I think, but his point is, which I, which is correct, is it's almost like he got to see what each round brings. And and I agree, the, not only the stewardship of this board, but previous boards and previous administrations. The way we do business in Wet Lake has put us in very sound footing. To be able to, like you said, weather the storm. And round one, we're gonna be okay. And and but we can't sit back and say, all right, we're good, you know, um, because there is a very. Very clear message coming from Columbus and their position is. Schools do not have a funding issue, they have a spending issue. Every problem a school district has, they want to hire a new person. Fix it. And and that, the message they're giving us is, you know, you can't think that way. And and so that's something that um. We're gonna have to watch.
Are, are you aware of any state that does not collect property taxes or funding of schools and libraries ever?
Um, I I know they exist. Uh, I can't think of a a one-off handle, you know, I I want to say Florida depends.
I think they do. I think they're looking to get rid of that.
They're looking, okay. Um, you know, I I think the challenge that you have is. You need to look at, not necessarily the the, the taxes themselves, but uh, the revenue, the amount of revenue received and how you would replace. So an example would be, you know, there may be places that have very high tourism and they can say, okay, well, we'll make the people who the tourists pay for. You know, we'll put it in hotel taxes and and take a tax, you know, a a tax on on admission, uh, different things like that, that that would work for someplace. Um, I I was born and raised in Ohio, lifelong resident of Ohio, never left Ohio. Uh, I love Ohio, but we're not a tourist state. And no matter what we do, we're not going to change that anytime soon. Um, and so we would want to talk through, if fine, if we want to get rid of property taxes. How do we replace it? What's the appropriate thing? And we can't just throw things out like, say, well, we'll make it up with tourist tax because that's not gonna generate that twenty-four billion dollars. Um, we should do a lottery. Oh, yeah, we we've, we've tried that, we've tried to get, you know, revenue, uh, you know, there's those different people.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate both uh, uh, Mr. Hopkins and uh, Dr. Goddard, you guys have the floor, so thank you.
Anything else for the treasurer's report?
No, madam, first of all.
Okay, uh, moving into a hearing of the public, um, is there anybody who wishes to come forward? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna go on to approval of the minutes. Uh, okay, we don't have motion on this one. Um, has everybody had a chance to review any edits? All those in favor? Hi, hi. Eddie and Nate? All right, moving on to treasurer's recommendation.
Thank you. Um, I just have a couple of things uh, before the board tonight here, so uh, please take a look at it, it's just that announced and purpose statements, so. Yeah, if I have to answer them, but if not, I'm happy to combine the two into one vote.
Okay, is there a motion to approve treasurer's recommendations eight, five, A and B? Moved. Any questions? All right, roll call.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Here now.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And we're back to you, Dr. Goddard.
Thanks. Uh, I'd like to do six A separately, um, our gifts and donations from Grace Baptist Church. Pastor Steve Strong and Pastor Ryan Atkins donated bagels, donuts and ten dollar car wash certificates to the staff at Westlake Elementary School. And as I mentioned earlier, the Home Builders Institute donated two thousand dollars of Home Depot gift cards to the Technology Engineering Department at Westlake High School. Um, the rest of them letters uh, B through O, L through O, actually K through O are, I'm sorry. L through O are amended resolutions to make some corrections from previous board meetings. Um. And then uh, B was the calendar that I mentioned and then primarily staffing with uh, athletic supplementals as well as. Uh, approving some volunteers, some instruction instructors. And that's about it.
All right, uh, I'll go ahead and make a motion for six A approving the resolution to accept gifts and donations, is there a second?
Okay.
As always, thank you. I'm very excited about the uh, Home Builder Association alliance we've got and. The, on top of the two two thousand dollar gift cards, there was a handful on of equipment also. By pallet, by thousand, which is phenomenal, so. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And.
I saw that when I was previewing the agenda before and I thought, wow, two two thousand dollar gift cards from Home Depot, that was amazing.
It feels like a price is right.
One, I said, but like, it just feels like, Adam Purdy has to be pretty excited about this.
Should be, I mean, the the home builders, they're, they're serious about the commitment and uh, there's a need and and just matches very well.
Roll call.
Girda?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'll make it the motion for superintendent, superintendent's recommendations B through O. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, or the revised calendar, and I'm not asking for this for tonight, um, we take a while via parent square if we can. Yeah, just to make sure everybody knows about that date.
Think that was a great idea to move it, thank you for doing that. Um. I just want to know how Lakewood can start later and I mean, they're getting out way early. And starting at the same time, so they must not be getting some of the, maybe the professional days.
No, there's, yeah, there's nuances in every contract and um, yeah. Um, let's see, I don't, I actually didn't, I don't have Lakewood listed, but yeah, but for the most part, we're right on with, within a day of.
I think when we realized that when we approved the last calendar, but it was, it was when all the other schools were out, we were still in that week in June and. And that's when the complaints started to come in, I.
Well, I do have one teacher here and I can, I'm, I don't know if Jen can attest for what it was like when having all the other schools out at the end of the year and us back in session would probably. Especially in a middle school, tough to contain a little bit. Yeah.
Go to where? Uh, my own clothing lab. Done about that. They were, they either, yeah, thought, yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't think family understand either, they don't understand why calendar. Sorry, they don't understand teacher workdays. I just want to ask you, why do you want a teacher workday? And I was like, that's not how that works, you know?
Yeah, yeah, right.
I'm thrilled we're moving it up a week, because.
Yes, yes.
Don't, one, with so much of the high school being bait essentially back in, serving in August. Because of athletics and band and whatnot. Um, and so many different opportunities to get there, either having to leave school early for, because those camps start.
Leaving the first football game of that, I mean, we weren't even in school then at, at a game, so just makes sense to do what we did.
Um, any other questions on agenda items being through O?
No, I got a text from Pete, it's.
He's working on it.
He dropped to the high school to reset something.
Roll call.
Girda?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Where to our section hearing of the public? Okay, uh, going on to your board comment.
I would love to personally congratulate that, Dr. Goddard, thank you for the BATS award. You obviously have worked very hard for that, been through a number of ups and downs.
Yep.
Um, things that are out of your control, sure, so thank you. Um, I didn't get a chance to go to the groundbreaking or the ribbon cutting over at Parkside, but I did drive through there. They did a great job.
Did a great job with it, didn't they?
They really did.
It's nice.
I was over there for the groundbreaking and over the ribbon cutting and it was really wonderful to see the new facility that they.
Was a good turnout.
There's a good turnout, uh, Wet Lake Soccer Association and the Football Association had. Like inflatable things for the kids to do and so that also helped bring out, there's some food trucks and whatnot. Um, had some interesting conversations with city council members and the uh, Paul Horn from the the director of the Recreation Department. Um, while it's open, there's nothing scheduled for this fall, so it's really not gonna be utilized then until the springtime. Um, they have not been trained yet on maintenance or any of the other things. Um. There's no signage yet on really like. There's no signage yet on really like, no metal cleat, you know, all the, no sunflower seed. All the things that we have already, so um, made the com, we had a conversation about why don't you talk to Colin and Durnick? And uh, you know, if you've, there's things that we've learned, uh, like for example, lacrosse. If the lacrosse school is at the same spot all the time, it wears out the turf, so they need to put a pad down now. So it, there's things that, you know, that maintenance, while they are gonna have the team to go through training, it's just one of those where we've been doing it for how many years now?
Ten years.
Yeah. So.
It, also, it's just nice that it, speaking of the decade, and, and I remembered a de, a decade ago, having a conversation with the city. And they're saying they want uh, fields at Parkside, and so it feels like a lot of things are coming full circle. You know, with instead of having a Kmart on Center Ridge, we have a school, and instead of having a, a school on Hilliard there, we have fields, it's just kinda, it's kinda neat to see all this to come to fruition.
It was also nice to see uh, Doug Coons, who's varsity soccer coach, who's there, um, Colin was there.
So, so our teams will be able to, that's a conversation that uh, Paul Horn, you know, Colin will, are gonna have.
Okay.
Yeah, I know the soccer coach is interested in.
Right, and she already has a email and I need to kind of, wanted to talk to Colin and kind of take it from there.
But those old posts up there now, we could be greeting a bunch of new kids.
Could use one on Friday.
Never too late, Brad.
Oh, it's too late.
Well, since uh, our last meeting, we've had a number of things going on in the district, um, and although it seems like months ago. Since our last meeting, we've had a homecoming and the alumni dinner, uh, which we all attended, which was nearly nicely attended by a large group of people. We did an outstanding job, um, I had the opportunity of uh, running in the uh, the Westlake Fun Run Five K, um. But I'm still recovering from Snow Marathon, but um, I don't see. Um, Liz and I had the opportunity of uh, volunteering at the, our Westlake Band Dinner, um, on senior night, and also work in the concession stand, which was a lot of fun. I think uh, we might have had the largest uh, was it the largest sales for an evening?
It wasn't, cause uh, it wasn't homecoming at first. They did very well.
Very well, to the point where they ran out of hot chocolate.
Yes.
Yeah.
Basically after halftime, it was, yeah.
So, um, I myself have uh, been trying to attend as many meetings as possible, including uh, the Music Boosters meeting, W Dad meeting. Uh, been to a couple of uh, the D I S and the L B M S P T A meetings, they all have fundraisers going on, so be on the lookout. Um, also since we've met, uh, we had the opportunity, or the P T A had the opportunity to team up with the League of Women Voters. And had a school board uh, forum for the candidates that are running this fall. Uh, Mr. Hopkins, one of the questions that came up was, how do we get more people to school board meetings? And my first thought was fifty-fifty raffle.
I hope that's something we can do, no, I'm not sure we share, you know.
We want them at our.
Friday ceremony, um, on the twenty-third.
Eight, was it ninety-eight?
Yeah.
Eight.
Which is amazing, what a great group of kids, or young adults, um. And then also, I wanted to take a minute to thank, we've, we've got our administrative staff that uh, does an amazing job at uh, our football games uh, on a weekly basis, I know that uh, you know, obviously we see uh, the high school staff there, but also the middle school and the D I S. Uh, administrators are up in the stands and, and out and about, you know, just keeping an eye over everything. So I wanted to take an opportunity to, to really thank them for all of their hard work over the course of the football season. And as the month comes to a close, also wanted to take an opportunity to say thank you to our principals, as uh, Principal's Month now is coming to an end. I think it was the month of October, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and then the final thing I have is that uh, uh, was at the football game in North Homestead on uh, Friday night. Unfortunately, it came down for the last two minutes and came up a little short, but uh, I congratulate to Coach Yantek and his staff for having a, a, a great season, and I wish nothing but the best to all the seniors. And along with that, uh, Mr. Turnon and I had the opportunity to attend the uh, soccer game on Saturday evening that uh, we came up one goal short against Revere. Get it out of here, okay? But uh, again, uh, Coach Coons and, and Coach Butler had done, done an amazing job, um, with our soccer program. And uh, congratulate them on a, a, a great season and to all the seniors that are going off, uh, you know, doing their thing, so. Thought that happened this evening. Been a little busy.
Yeah, it was a great game on Saturday night, local, but it was a great game, though I do have to make the comment that may feel tight.
Mm-hmm.
And their bleachers had two sections that had actual chairs.
Whoa.
Yeah.
With cushions?
No cushions, just like, plastic, like a chair with.
They're comfortable.
But they were, it was funny, cause everybody was in like the out one section, yeah.
Wow.
And we, we, we both bent Colin's ear about that for our stadium.
Which means Todd's gonna get an email?
Let's think about that, we put individual seats in there, we could do tickets and naming rights and seat. So it could be, you know, we could make some money off.
We actually did that here, uh, in Westlake, back when my kids were still, so that was in the eighties. And we were playing at um, the middle school, we didn't have the high school field. We did sell.
Field.
Yeah, refilled, refilled, and we did sell, uh, right on the fifty-yard line, we sold, um, at, at a little higher rate, uh, you know, they could buy those seats and uh, I don't know what happened to that, cause we were in Demon's Club back then, as very high, so, so we did try it, so it's entirely possible that we could try it again.
Let's think about, so there's a thought. I had sent out to the board members, a board member handbook for Westlake. And I, I'd taken it, another district's uh, handbook and made edits for appropriate for Westlake. There's still some more editing, but before I asked Dr. Gagen and Mr. Hopkins to spend some time on it, I wanted to make sure that everybody's on board with the board member handbook.
I think it was a great idea, thanks for all the work that you did on it, and uh, I, I think including the list of acronyms was absolutely helpful, because as I told you, nobody besides the military has more uh, acronyms than education does, so.
We will go forward with it and go from there. And don't forget to vote on or before election day on Tuesday, November fourth, cause that is coming up very quickly. Anything else for board comments? Alright, moving on to uh, read, first reading of policies.
I'd like to mention that, so I did have, I do have, uh, I send the policies to Liz and Barb to review, and we reviewed them. Um, there are probably between twenty-five and thirty either being proposed or posed, revised, or rescinded, um, you should have received a description of each of them. I'm not gonna go through them uh, one by one, we have already done that. Um, if you, you have questions or wanna uh, talk about those, we can also do that at a work session. Um, or you can contact me directly, um.
A lot of them are just like updating the address of the Federal Department of Education.
There's a new address for it?
Yeah.
Cleveland Ops Close.
Oh.
So, in our policies, we needed to.
To what zero?
Oh, uh, those are the, there's a lot of things like that where there's not a lot of content there.
Major update. Yeah, I didn't think there were major updates, and, and they tweak based on legislation.
I'm just wondering if after the, the cell phone thing is, is the big idea.
That's the big one.
And um, after it goes into effect in January, just wondering, uh,
I won't have my child yell at me every day about it.
Oh, it's gonna be terrible, I mean, I, I think you're gonna see more policy on this, you know, in the future, but I just I think it's.
Depends who you talk to, there, there are some schools saying, we did it, it wasn't a big, as big a deal as we thought it was gonna be, and then others, it is. So I, we'll see. Yep.
Any other questions on policies? Okay, uh, we are going to, uh, we need a motion for going into executive session.
There's no moves.
For uh, during to executive session to discuss appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion to motion or compensation of an employee or official. Lizinsky made the motion, is there a second? Roll call.
Discussion, do you want to?
Oh, discussion, sorry. Through discussion, roll call.
Gender into exec session at seven P M. Lizinsky?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Turn on?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And no action will be taken coming out of executive question.